Okay, it's 7:01. I'm going to convene the meeting of the East Windsor Board of Selectmen. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegion, and I would recognize Selectman Norrell to lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All members of the board are present. Before we move further, I have a couple of added agenda items that are necessitated by time, or I would have held them for another meeting. They were forwarded, or two of the three were forwarded around earlier. Once, I'd, the first one I'd ask be added is Agenda 9F, which is a form that states the town's assurances of compliance with Title IV of the Civil Rights Act. The second one is a Department of, Department of the Treasury Coronavirus State Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Representative Authorization. And the third item to be 9H would be the AARP Grant Program update. Could I have a motion for those additions, please?
Marie, just to remove all three of those.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Maiden, seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Blackman Muska.
Aye.
Blackman Baker.
Aye.
Blackman D'Souza. Thank you, folks. Approval of the meeting minutes, May, the May 20th, 2021 Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting Minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Yep.
Selectman Muska would move to approve the Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting Minutes from May 20th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Marie, just a second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Blackman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Blackman D'Souza.
Aye.
Is there any public participation this evening? Is there any public participation? Seeing none, we'll have another opportunity later in the meeting. We have a number of communications that I wanted to share with the board. The first is a resolution adopted by the Diversity Council. It's a resolution concerning the renaming of Plantation Road. I think that is pretty self-explanatory. There's a request from the American Heritage River Commission to rename certain town parks. Nope, lost Alan, he'll be back. The next is proclamation commemorating Pride Month. The next is a letter from Congressman Larson restating or reaffirming what the town's local appropriation is going to be for the American Rescue Plan Act funding, which the congressman, I think conservatively, lists at $1.15 million. Numbers I've seen from OPM have that at $1.18 million. So that's certainly a good baseline for us to work from. And lastly is a thank you note that we received for the town's financial support for the Network Against Domestic Abuse. So on to resignations, Board and Commissions resignations and appointments. We have two.
If anyone doesn't object, I'll do them together. I move to appoint James Barton and Heather Spencer, both as regular members of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for a term expiring July 31st, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the appointments? Seeing none, Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Blackman Muska.
Aye.
Blackman D'Souza.
Aye.
Blackman Baker.
Aye.
The next item of business, Agenda Item 8D, is actually a completed item awaiting an in-person town meeting. So I would ask for a motion to postpone that.
Make a motion to postpone Item D.
Selectman Norrell will second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Blackman Norrell.
Aye.
Blackman Muska.
Aye.
Blackman D'Souza.
Aye.
Blackman Baker.
Aye.
So now we're on to new business. Attorney Sherman, would you mind terribly if we took a couple of items out of order in the interest of staff time?
Of course, no problem.
Thank you. So I would ask that we take up Agenda Items 9C, 9D, and 9H, which is the Town Ordinance 90-8 waiver, the Mobile Dental Services Agreement, and the ARP Grant Program update.
Selectman Norrell so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Blackman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Blackman Baker.
Aye.
Okay. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 9C, which is a discussion of Town Ordinance 90-8. This was a correction in the agenda. I mistakenly labeled it as 90-3. But the document that is in front of you, at least electronically in front of you, is the form that we're recommending be submitted to the town when there are applicants interested in having alcohol on town properties. You can see the limitations that were discussed at the last meeting are incorporated into this. We solicited feedback from the Director of Community Services and from the Police Chief, and then incorporated the comments from members of the board. So this is, this is the draft that's in front of you. Any questions or comments on it? Charlie?
So we're going to leave it up to the Police Chief to approve times?
Approve times.
Well, I thought we had discussed it making a, like a cap as far as when this would be allowed to go into the evening.
The ordinance specifically delegates this board as the decision-maker on that.
Okay, so we'll be approving whether it's the time?
Correct.
Okay, as long as somebody is.
It's us by ordinance.
So the process would be, this would come to us and we'd approve this first, and then it goes to the people listed at the bottom?
I would actually ask that the people listed at the bottom have sign off before the Board of Selectmen take action on it.
That's it. Yep.
Process. But on that point, Alan, Sarah, I see your hand, but before we get off Alan's point, I don't know that the building inspector needs to be on here, because we're not, generally speaking, we're not talking about something that would be within his jurisdiction.
He would probably, if they had a tent, he would be approving that separately, right?
And, right, and so would the fire marshal. But the fire marshal has jurisdiction over occupants, so. I don't know what you guys think. Leave it on, take it off. I personally don't see a need for it to be there. But I, you know, I yield to you guys.
I mean, unless someone was building something the day of, and then, like, maybe a stage or something, it would have to be inspected. But I don't see that happening.
I think it's okay to remove it. I don't see the necessity of having it on here either.
Sarah, you had another point you were trying to make.
Oh, yeah. I see it says non-residence permit fee $50. Is it free to residents?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
Jason, just for clarification, they fill out a top form saying they want it at the reservoir, and we're going to use the ban shell for an example. When it comes down to permission for the above request, it has approved denied, and then says consumption in pavilion only, or other conditions. Should it be spelt out that the ban shell can be in the open?
Should, I missed you on the last part there.
There's nothing specifically indicating that area. So they would just put parking wreck ban shell, I guess, and they'll either approve or deny that, right?
Melissa, do you have an opinion on that?
Sorry. So I think this is overall just on town property. It's not specific to a specific location, correct?
That's right.
Then, then that would be consumption in pavilion area only, which leads me to believe that's the reservoir.
I don't think it's limited to, so, for example, if you wanted to have a Jack and Jill or a bridal shower, you could, you could rent out the pavilion. If you wanted to do a, I'm not saying this would be approved, but if you wanted to do a softball tournament, you might rent out a different, different area. Kind of cool to see a horseshoe tournament at some point, but, you know, I don't think it's East Windsor Park-specific, it's municipal property-specific.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Can I have a motion to approve as amended?
Selectman Norrell will move to approve the application for exception of alcoholic beverages on town property as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Blackman D'Souza.
Aye.
Blackman Baker.
Aye.
Okay. So we might have the first opportunity to put this to good use next Thursday.
I was going to ask, Jason, it's Melissa, how do I do that with you not having a meeting?
Actually, we probably will have a meeting sometime middle of next week, and sure with the board now. So as you all know, my wife is like super duper pregnant, and it's pretty likely that she's not, that I won't be here on the 17th. So just as an opportunity to do some cleanup for end-of-year stuff that we need to do, and there are a couple of other things that need to be on there, I'd like to have a meeting, if possible, next Wednesday, just so that the end-of-year stuff can get behind us, and I can make sure that I'm moving any business that I need to move. So Melissa, with that thought in mind, assuming that works for the board, if you get this application into us tomorrow or early next week, we can actually consider it at that, at that time. 9D, this also involves Melissa. We had a meeting that was actually at the impetus of the Housing Authority. They are developing a relationship with a company called First Choice Health Centers, which is, it provides a mobile dental service for certain clientele. And Linda Collins invited the town and the senior center to participate in that. Melissa and I joined a meeting with Linda and the representative from First Choice Health Centers to talk about what their program offering was and what the obligations were. Because it's a contract, it's not something that you or she or I would sign into without the permission of the contracting authority, which is the Board of Selectmen. So that's why the contract draft in 9D is in front of you. Melissa can talk about specifics of the program and the benefits to senior center clients. But it's, it's a nice service to be able to provide. I don't believe there's a fiscal impact to us. It's just a promotional thing in providing adequate space. Melissa, did you want to add anything to that?
Sure. So the opportunity would be to allow for seniors to have a closer-to-home opportunity for dental care, as well as there's some other health opportunities that they also offer, and connection to resources. So just being able to offer that in the close proximity to the senior center is a goal of ours at the, at the center.
One of the things that we learned particularly during the pandemic and the administration of vaccine is that people are not necessarily that excited about leaving town for stuff. They would much rather have the services provided to them here locally, if possible, and this is an opportunity to kind of expanding on one of those areas that we'd like to continue to offer. Any questions or comments?
My only concern was what they, you know, liability, and I see they're providing a certificate of insurance, so it's good to me.
Marie, did you have anything?
I just have a question. This sliding scale that they have, based upon so-called poverty level, how do I interpret that? Not to show my ignorance, but I'm trying to interpret what it would be. There's two charts, and I don't know where or how they determine what somebody would pay. I know they got to provide all their income, and at some point, somebody will say they're either A, B, C, D, or E. Do you know, Melissa?
I don't know, but I'm happy to find out for you. Based on, again, it'll be on a client-by-client basis.
At the very least, we would know who qualifies for certain programs through the Social Service Department that are poverty level.
And what do you anticipate? Because they have to provide all their documentation and stuff to this provider. How long will it take before they'll be able to get service from them?
They didn't lead us to believe there was any lapse in time.
What they did say is that they would be able to service, I think, two people per hour over a seven-hour day twice a year, is what we're talking about here. So it's roughly 14 seniors would be able to get this service on twice yearly checkups.
Okay. So twice, twice a year, 14 people.
Right.
That was the minimum. If we find that it's a very popular program, I'm sure they would entertain coming back more.
Yeah, and she alluded to that as well.
Okay. That's all I got, thanks.
Anyone else? Could I have a motion?
Make a motion to allow the, what if, the First Selectmen to sign the agreement, Dental Services Agreement between the Town of East Windsor and First Choice Health Centers Incorporated.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Selectman Norrell.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Blackman Baker.
Aye.
Next is 9H, which is a discussion of the ARP Grant Program. Mr. Krivdov.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would, I would only say that where we are today, I have recommended to the First Selectmen, and I believe with the acquiescence of the Town Council, that we hold off till June 15th in anticipation of the actual funds arriving at the town's disposal. I admit, I am a little gun-shy about moving forward with such an epic announcement, giving hope to so many people in the town without actually having the cash in hand. And I might be extremely conservative in that assessment, but that is my recommendation.
Yeah, George, Josh and I did talk about that. It would look pretty, pretty poorly for the town if we were to announce a million-dollar grant program, and then the money didn't materialize. Now that said, I do have confirmation from, from the National League of Cities that the funding has been transmitted to the states. So Connecticut has it. OPM just hasn't dished it out yet. One of the things that this board will need to approve at our meeting next week is, oh, actually, no, those are the added agenda items, G and H, that will allow us to actually access that funding. Amy needs to transmit a certain collection of paperwork to the state by June 10th, some of which we added tonight, so that we can keep that ball moving and actually receive the funds. So George and Josh's recommendation is well-taken, but it looks like things are moving along at the pace that they're supposed to from, from the federal government and from OPM, so. Nonetheless, better to be safe than sorry here. We want to do this right. Any, any questions or comments for George? Okay. Mr. Krivdov, thank you for joining us. I hope you have a good trip next week.
Thank you, and I'm looking forward to the program starting.
We are too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll return to the regular call of the agenda. 9A is a discussion of the Broadbrook Mill Remediation. I'd like to introduce Attorney Kristen Sherman, representing Raytheon. Attorney Sherman and I have had a number of conversations and a couple of in-person visits. I'll leave it to her to introduce her team and give us an update on where Raytheon sees things at the moment.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks to the board and to the residents who are on the call for letting us speak to you tonight. We are probably long overdue for an update to the board relative to two things that are going on at the facility. One is, we'd like to update you on the status of the remediation, and then the second half of the presentation will relate to the historic preservation issues and the historic process that we're working through right now. I will spare you sort of the lawyer presentation. I'm going to have my team give the bulk of the presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions, though, as are they. So at first, let me just introduce the team that's on the call tonight. Dave Klimmer's on the call. He's in Raytheon Technologies Remediation Manager. This is his site, so-called, and he oversees the remediation work in conjunction with AECOM, who serves our outside consultants. Martin Duramo is also on the call. Some of you may be familiar with Martin. He's in government relations with the company. And Martin has appeared before the board on previous occasions and has been involved in supporting this site for a number of years. And then Emily Everett is also with us tonight, despite apparently some disastrous weather in her neck of the woods. So if we drop Emily, it's because of weather troubles. Emily is our historic consultant. She's, she works for AECOM, and she has lots of history with the, what we'll talk about later on, which we refer to as the Section 106 process. So Emily will take the latter half of the presentation. I, in terms of logistics here, Dave, do you want to share your screen, or would you like me to share, and you can tell me when to click?
I can share, sure.
Okay.
And let me see about. All right. Can everybody see the presentation?
No, not yet.
Okay. Share. How about now?
You can see your screen.
We can see your notes too, though.
Okay. Let me.
I say that having been there myself.
Yes.
Dave, I can share my screen if you want, and you can just tell me when.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Okay. Sorry, out there with me for a second here.
I'm going to stop sharing, I believe.
Okay, I should be screen sharing now.
Can still see the notes, though.
Dave will have to unshare first.
Yeah, there we go. I see it. Move to a different screen.
There you go.
Hold on one second here. Let me reopen. How's that?
Looks like it is opening.
Sorry, never let the lawyers deal with the technology end of things. It suggests that I'm screen sharing.
You are. It's just still trying to open your Adobe.
Okay.
Other good old days when you would have poster boards and fun things like that.
Poster boards. Kristen, I have it.
You can, you do?
Yeah, it's the 26-page slide deck.
It is.
Why don't I drive?
Sorry about that. Okay, so I'll stop share.
Yep.
I'm out. So Dave and Emily, if you will prompt when you need a screen change.
That's good.
Thank you.
There we go. So as Kristen mentioned, I am the project manager on this site. I took it over about a year ago, when one of my coworkers, Bill Penn, retired. So I've been quickly getting up to speed and working with AECOM to start to drive the process forward a little bit. So it's a good time to come in and talk with you and update you on where we are. We did want to start with a little bit of just background on the project, just to set the stage for what we're up against here. And then we'll talk about the remediation project part of it, and then we'll go to the Section 106. So Jason, if you want to go forwards a couple of slides, the next one, we introduced everybody already. We can go ahead to the next one. So just a reminder of the history of the site. I'm sure many of you know more than I do about the history of this site, having grown up in the area and seen many of the changes through the years. But it is a site with a long industrial history, about 170 years, going back to the early 1800s or so, right up through the 1980s, when commercial operations ceased on the property. Hamilton Sunstrun was the owner and operator for about 23 of those years, from 1954 to 1977. We then transferred it to another commercial entity that ran the business for a while, and then they sold it off for development. Right about when it was getting ready for development, there was a significant fire that destroyed much of the mill complex. I believe that there was 20, 23, 24 buildings, something like that. And now we were down to really only four or five of the original buildings left on the site. Back in 2017, when we made a submittal to the State Historic Preservation Office, because of the effects of that fire, they indicated that it was Because of the effects of that fire, they indicated that it was unlikely that the site still merited listing on the National Register of Historic Places. It is still there, it is on the registry, but much of the historic fabric has been lost on the property. The environmental work on the site dates back many years. Actually before 2003, even some of the early investigations were in the 1990s. Hamilton Sunstrun became heavily involved in 2003 with the completion of a consent agreement with Connecticut DEP and EPA. That was driven by the sites listing on the national the superfund list. And in that agreement, we agreed to clean up the site. The state is, is partially paying for that due to the historic contamination on the site. And then we also agreed to work with the town to, to create redevelopment opportunities at this site. So we're working through that process now. There have been many, many rounds of investigation out here, all of which have been reviewed and approved by the regulators. And that led to the development of a remedial action plan on the site back in 2010, which was approved by the regulators. We went back again in 2018 after a few more rounds of investigation and refined that remedial plan in a document called the Remedial Action Optimization Report. And that also was approved by the regulators back in 2018. Next slide, Jason. Site ownership has been fairly simple. It was developed back in the early 1800s as a gristmill and sawmill. 1835 was when the, the woolen mill started operations and that went right through 1954. And they had some pretty significant operations there, including manufactured gas operations. And with the burning of coal and there were other operations, there is historic contamination that was derived from those operations. As I mentioned, from 54 to 77, Hamilton Sunstrun owned and operated the site. Doing some, excuse me, small-scale industrial work in the making of printed circuit boards and boron filaments. Alcoa took it over for another nine years. And then during that time, the site was listed on, on the National Register of Historic Places. And in 86 is when it was sold for redevelopment to Connecticut Building Corp. And it's also at that time that the fire occurred and destroyed much of the property. 1990s, the project got back on track with the remaining buildings and they started to, to convert them to condominiums. And then some of the contamination was found after that. And that's when the negotiations, negotiations between Hamilton Sunstrun, the state EPA led to the consent degree, decree where we've agreed to clean up the site with the state's assistance and prepare it for redevelopment. Next slide, please. From an investigation and remediation standpoint, as I mentioned, goes back to 1993 when some of the remedial investigations began. There's a lot of dates on here, all throughout this period, there was continued investigation of the property. Some of the critical dates, 2000, the site was now listed on the National Priorities List, the superfund site list because of contamination that was found and because of the historic uses of the property. The agreement with the state was in 2003 to, on how to handle the cleanup. And then in 2005, EPA stepped back a little bit and let the state take the lead on remediation of the site. So we've been working very closely with the state, also with Al Silva at the EPA as well to make sure that the, the project is moving forwards. A lot of investigation from 2005 to 2010 for the first remedial action plan development. And again, after that, we had more rounds of investigation that led to the remedial approach optimization report. Between 2018 and 2020, there was still ongoing investigation and groundwater sampling and sampling of some nearby residential drinking water supply wells. And during that period, there was a lot of discussions with the town on status of the buildings and how to move forwards with remediation on the site. So it slowed things down for a little bit. But now we're really looking to move things forward and to, to bring the site to closure from a remediation perspective and to, to prepare it for its next phase of life, if you will. And then this year, we got a good piece of news and that the EPA has actually withdrawn the site from consideration on the national priorities list. So they felt that the contaminant levels here were not significant enough to warrant listing on that list. So they, they formally delisted it from NPL, which is great. Next slide, please. Wanted to go through a little discussion of the remedial approach. As I mentioned, there was a lot of historic contamination that relates back to the use of the property by the mill. And it, it's very visually apparent when you do investigate, when you do borings, sort of borings out here. All of these little dots, I know it's a bit of an eye chart, but all of these little dots are borings that have been done through the years. And this is actually only through 2010. This is a figure that was put together for what was in, or for Hamilton Sunstrun back then. All of the green ones are areas where there is contaminated fill that originates from the use of the property as a mill. It's called the black fill. That's all, because it's so visually apparent when you do a soil boring, you can easily tell that it's there. And when you test that, you do find total petroleum hydrocarbons. You find polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. You find semi-volatil compounds and all sorts of things like that, some metal compounds in there. Not real high immediate threat things, but things that you have to deal with from a remediation perspective. And some of those thicknesses of that black material is quite thick. It's as, as thick as 13 to 15 feet thick in parts of the property. Some of these are only in the zero to two foot range or two to four foot range. But there's a lot that are zero to eight feet, zero to 10 feet. And then there's a few where it is up to 15 feet thick. So a lot of fill material across this entire property. Next slide, if you would, Jason. By the way, feel free to jump in, ask questions. I'm more than happy to answer them along the way, or if you'd rather, we could hold them to the end as well.
So with, with that invitation, David, I would go back to this slide and ask.
Sure.
Where, where on the parcel are those areas of highest contamination that you were just talking about?
It, it's really not a, a uniform pattern. And maybe the next slide is actually a better picture to show you. We have a couple of cross-sections, we have three cross-sections here, two that go east to west across a property. And then the one on the right goes north to south across the length of the property. And if you look at this closely, the, this document's in the, the remedial action plan from 2010. You'll see that, that the thickness of the fill sort of increases, decreases. Where they had depressions in the, in the ground, they would fill it in with this black material. Where they had a former basement where they ripped out a building, they would put this black material in it. The river has changed location a couple of times throughout the 170 years of, of historical operations. They would fill that in with this black material. So it's really not uniform. A lot of those are in the, the center of the property as well as up towards the, the north end of the property. But it is, it's not uniform either in either direction, either east, west or north, south. It varies across the entire property. And the, that report would have a full-size copy of this where you could see that, that fill layer. In addition to the black fill, there's another type of fill material which doesn't have that discoloration, but that also has, excuse me, impacts in that soil as well. So that's, that's the primary contaminant out here. There are other contaminants. There's some chlorinated solvents out here that were from former degreasing operations. There is some gooey oil-like material that probably goes back to use of the property as a coal gasification. They had a facility right in the, almost the center of the property, but a little bit to the east side. And we found some of that during our most recent investigation program. So there are other contaminants, but primarily it's total petroleum hydrocarbons and, and aromatic pHs and semi-volatiles. Next slide. So where we are right now, as I mentioned, lots of investigation to date. Most recently, starting in December of last year, we did an investigation called the pre-design investigation. And that was something that the state called out, state EPA called out for us to do before we went to final design. And it was to determine if some of the compounds that degrade naturally were continuing to degrade and also to better define the limits of some of these areas. So we implemented that from December to end of January, review the data, put together a report, and that went into the state in late February, I believe it was, or early March. There have been some limited soil remediation programs. Some related to the redevelopment of the, the commercial property to the east right along Main Street. There was an impacted soil layer that we wanted to get offsite as part of that redevelopment program by another entity. But the site is stable. Soil and groundwater conditions are known. We've monitored groundwater now for a couple of decades, 15 to 20 years probably. And the plumes that we have identified are decreasing over time. There's no exposure pathways, there's no access to the site right now. The site is fenced, there's no trespassing signs. We've increased the security surveillance due to some possible evidence of, of people getting onto the site and maybe kids playing on the site or squatters taking up some residence possibly. And then we continue to do the annual voluntary residential well sampling. We can be out there in a week doing that annual sampling program. So site's very well-known and we're ready to move forwards with remediation of the site. Go ahead for the next slide, please. As I mentioned, we did do the, the pre-design investigation, which was required by EPA and DEP. The, the three sort of semi-circular to oval areas or four were where we did the investigation. So it was focused more on the northern and northwestern part of the property. We ended up doing 17 more soil borings and 10 more test pits. And what that showed is that the, the data does demonstrate that the remedial approach is appropriate for the site. That there is continued natural attenuation of the organic compounds that are in some of these areas. And the report, oh, submitted in May, this more recently than I thought. So yeah, the report has been submitted to DEP and EPA and we have not received any feedback from them as yet on that report. So we are continuing to move forwards. That now puts us in a position to, to really move forwards with the remedial design. And we let the, the state know, we actually had a teleconference with them today just to update them on the status of the project. We asked them if they had any questions on the report and let them know that we're the timeline for doing the, the design program. We're also implementing something called the hydraulic and hydrology evaluation, the H and H report. We have to update that. And then all of that will prepare us for submitting the necessary permits to do the, the remediation work. Next slide, please. So what is the remedial approach? As I said, this has been around since 2010, it's not new news. It was modified slightly with the 2018 REO report. But it's really the same concept. And that is, the majority of the material is a fairly low concentration petroleum hydrocarbon-based contamination. And so there will be a soil cap, a permeable soil cap put across the majority of the site. I'll show you the limits of that in a little while. And then there's one smaller impermeable section, which will prevent rainwater from going through that cap. And that'll be for soils that exceed something called the pollutant mobility criteria. There will be three areas where we will be injecting or mixing in oxygen release compounds, ORC compounds into the soil to help expedite the natural degradation of those compounds. And then we're doing some focused soil excavation, primarily where we have chlorinated solvents. We want to get that out of the ground and we want to ship that offsite for disposal in a landfill or an incinerator, something like that. And then in the brook itself, there is one small area where we have to do a sediment excavation program. Very limited area just downstream of the Broken Dam, which is sort of in back of the the old powerhouse building back, and back up and down gradient to that a little bit. The program will also include long-term groundwater compliance monitoring just to track contaminant levels over time. And then there will be land use restrictions, including a, a no residential use, land use restriction. The other parts would be non-disturbance of the cap or no build area for where there's VOC contamination, things like that. But we will have environmental land use restrictions at the end of the process. Next slide, please. So here is the cap. Everything that's sort of in the orangish-yellowish hatched area, that is the cap area. And that's either going to be a one-foot or a two-foot cap. We're still working with the state on the final thickness dimensions of that. As I mentioned, there will be a smaller impermeable cap that's off on the east side. That will be blended into the topography of the site. It's sort of at the base of a hill so that we can blend it into the, the natural terrain and have it be imperceptible. And the one last piece of the puzzle really is how do we design the cap around those existing or remaining buildings? And right now, our plan is to remove those buildings from the site and have tho, those areas be part of the cap. We're going to talk to that a little bit later in the section 106 part. But that whole area will be the, the cap. Next slide will show us where we're doing the soil amendments, I believe. Nope, it shows us where we're doing excavation programs. So there, the blue areas are areas that we will excavate and tuck beneath the impermeable cap that will be constructed on the east side of the property. The lime-green areas are areas where we have chlorinated solvent contamination. Not the whole box in those areas, there's a bunch of little tiny, small source areas within those boxes. I believe on the order of nine or 10 small discrete source areas will be removing those and shipping that soil offsite. And then the, the purplish or pinkish area in the brook is where the sediment remediation will be done. And that also will be shipped offsite. Next slide, please. And here's where we'll do the, the mixing of ORC compounds into the soil. So ORC, it, all it does is it, it provides extra oxygen in the soil so that the natural microbes in the soil can feed upon that and use that as a an additional fuel source, if you will, to, to then eat the contaminants and, and break it down naturally. So we'll mix that into the soil, just in the top couple of feet and allow nature to do its thing in those areas to, to break it down even quicker. The pre-design investigation that we did this year showed that it is occurring naturally right now. This will just add some fuel to the fire, if you will, and will help it move along a little more quickly. Next slide. So next steps, current project status. We have started to do our revision of the H and H study, hydrology and hydraulics and hydrology study. We have to be able to demonstrate to FEMA and the Army Corps that we're not going to change the amount of water that will feed into the adjacent brook, that there's a no, no change in the rise condition of that brook, if you will. So we started to work on that. So we started to work on that, that will also include a re-survey to do some spot checks of the edge of the brook and some other parts of the site, they're actually going to be out there next week, working on that to to get the survey in line. We'll then sort of pause the H and H study while we complete the sixty percent design, they sort of feed off of each other. The sixty percent design, we want to get that finished, so that we can get it into the state, make sure they're comfortable with that sixty percent design. And then we'll circle back, finish up the H and H, and then move forwards with a hundred percent design to to get that completed and approved by the state. Permitting is a, is the long tent in this poll, it's gonna take a long time to get all the local, state and federal permits that we need. I know that I'm sure Jason and the town can provide some assistance on some of these to expedite them a little, but our our experience is it just takes a long time to to take it through the process and to have an initial presentation meeting, and then another meeting to follow up with questions, and then to have them deliberate on it, and then finally get their approval, so. We're gonna start that as soon as we get the sixty percent dot design done, that'll feed into the permit applications and we'll get those into the agencies, but we are planning in the very near future, in the next couple of weeks, to do some pre-application meetings with each of the agencies to remind them of what we're looking to do here, they've all heard about it before. But we want to bring them back up to speed. Make sure we are setting our sites on the correct permits that we have to do, that we're not missing anything, so that we are are ready to go this summer, putting those permits together. Next slide, please. And this is just an overall, the current schedule for the project. Top item in in green is the the SHPO work, State Historic Preservation Office that Emily is gonna talk about, we did just do the section 106 submitted to them, notifying them of our findings related to the historic significance of the site and the and the village. So that has been submitted. Once we hear back from them, we'll look to schedule another consulting parties meeting, Emily will talk about what that is. The H and H is underway, that'll feed into the sixty percent, which will feed back into the H and H so that, starting in the summertime, late summer, early fall, we can start putting together the permits and the final design and get everybody's approval for the work. We are working with the state to possibly push part of the remediation forward and have it done this this summer. There's a question of whether we can do it under the the construction stormwater permitting regulations. People at the DEP seem to think that it was possible, so they're gonna circle back to their folks and and we're gonna see if we can get that going, that would be to remove the VOC contaminated soil this summer so that we can start the process of natural degradation in that area as well. But that's still a work in progress. If they say that it has to do with, if it's less than an acre, you can do it without a long lengthy permitting process. But if the whole project is more than an acre, you have to do it in one design permitting phase, and so this whole thing is greater than one acre, even though the VOC excavation is less than an acre, so we're working through that with the state right now to see what we can do. So that's the current schedule, next slide. And with that, I'll hand it off to Emily, so she can walk us through the section 106 process and where we are in that regard.
Thanks, Dave, good evening, everybody, I'm Emily Everett, I'm a senior architectural historian with AECOM. I have been involved with section 106 at the Broadbrook site since 2017. And I'm gonna provide just an overview of the section 106 process, just to ground the discussion. And for the benefit of of anyone who may still be scratching their heads over what section 106 is and why we're doing it here with this project. And then I'll conclude with just the status of the section 106 process with this project and and wrap it up with where we are to date. So, next slide. So why section 106 with this project? Section 106 is a is a federal regulation, it's part of the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. So it's been around for over fifty years. It is a very commonly triggered regulation in many communities across the country. And it's it's invoked and it's triggered when there's federal agency involvement in a project. Federal agency involvement can be through permitting, as it is here with an Army Corps permit that's required. It can be through federal funding, which is quite common, and it can be through federal ownership of land. So for example, I worked for the State Historic Preservation Office in Washington DC, and I could have done section 106 reviews all day, every day, just due to the extent of federal ownership in the district. In other states and other communities, you know, you may have just a couple 106 reviews a month or a year, it it just really depends on the types of projects and and the types of funding that are involved. So what does section 106 really do when it is invoked? It's really a stop, look and listen process. It requires a federal agency or their applicant to think about the effects of their actions on historic properties and take those into account during the process of of planning a project. It doesn't mandate a specific outcome, it doesn't preclude demolition from happening. It doesn't require a project to stop in its tracks. It's really a consultation process that just requires, again, an applicant to take into account historic properties. Historic properties for the purposes of section 106 is not just any, you know, any building that meets a certain age threshold. I think oftentimes there's a misinterpretation or misunderstanding that any property fifty years old or older, you know, has to be taken into account when section 106 is invoked. And that's not entirely true, it's it's more nuanced than that. The regulations say that historic property is one that is either listed on or is eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. So that's really the the kind of key for defining what a historic property is. There are some required steps in the 106 process. That's in that kind of third section in on that slide underneath the two bullet points. We are required, the applicant is required to describe the project, also known as the undertaking. They're described, they're required to delineate an area of potential effect, and basically that's it, that's the area where the project has the potential to affect historic resources, so. You know, you may have a project that's limited to a single parcel, an area of potential effect may include adjacent properties around that, around that parcel that could be affected through, you know, visual effects. Then within that area of potential effect, the applicants are required to identify historic properties, again, if it's eligible or list, it's listed or eligible for listing on the National Register, and then finally to identify consulting parties. Consulting parties are a really important part of the 106 process. And they've been involved in the 106 process in here at Broadbrook since 2017. A consulting party is a kind of loosely defined as a party that has a vested interest in in the project or has its part as part of its mission, historic preservation, cultural preservation, heritage preservation. So we've identified consulting parties, and they're invited to be a part of the consultation process. We solicit their input, we copy them on any submissions that are made to the State Historic Preservation Office. Next slide. Okay, so that's kind of the the kind of broad brush overview of what 106 is. So where are we in the 106 process here with with this project? Hamilton Sunstrand has hired AECOM as its historic consultant to to guide them through the process. Again, it started in 2017 when we formally initiated section 106 with the State Historic Preservation Office. And at that time, we also identified consulting parties and and sought their input at that time. Importantly, in 2017, while the focus of the 106 submission was really on the remediation, we did at that time identify historic properties. So we identified the fact that the Broadbrook Mill Site is listed on the National Register. At that time, we also provided an assessment of the the mill's, you know, current condition and the fact that the the property had changed pretty drastically since the time of its listing. So all of that information was included in the package that was submitted to the State Historic Preservation Office back in 2017. They responded at the end of that year. And they concluded that the remediation would not have a detrimental or adverse effect on the property. And with respect to the mill's listing on the National Register, they concluded that again, largely based on loss of integrity, that the property unlikely still merits listing, but that it remains listed on the register. So so that's that's where we are in terms of the status of the historic status of the buildings. Next slide.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
I just, you you just mentioned the term loss of integrity, it sounded like a like an actual, you know, definition that actually stands for some sort of, you know, on a lower limit of of stuff that's there that's of historic value or something, is that true? Could you explain that a little bit?
Um, in integrity, our integrity is kind of, it's loosely defined as the the those are the qualities for which the the property was listed on the National Register. So the Broadbrook Mill Site was listed as an ensemble of buildings, as a as a group of, you know, eighteen to twenty buildings that were part of the, you know, original mill complex, original early mill complex, it was a grouping. So when there was a significant loss of that grouping due to the fire, it really changed the original, you know, early makeup of 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 the mill and and why it was listed on the National Register. So if I kind of maybe flip that a little, you know, if I maybe flip that or or stated a different way, based on what's there today, if we were to evaluate the current mill, you know, the buildings that are left, despite the condition, if we were just to look at physically what's left of the mill and assess whether they qualify for the National Register today, it probably wouldn't meet the criteria. And that's not to say they're not historic, that's not to say they don't, you know, that they're not important in any way, it's just to say that if they wouldn't meet the criteria for listing on the National Register.
Thanks.
Does that answer?
Yep, it does.
The question, okay. Okay, so status of of 106. So we identify historic properties, we delineate an area of potential effect. And then what do we do? And and that's kind of where we are now, so in 2017, we, you know, we we I did the identification, we delineated our area of potential effect, and now we're kind of at this, the point in the section 106 process where we have to assess effects. And the regulations say that, you know, if there's no effect, then section 106 is concluded and you can proceed with your project. If there is the potential for an adverse effect, we have to, the regulations say we have to look at ways to avoid, minimize or mitigate them. And all three of those options are are acceptable, so. You know, we look at, is it possible to avoid, and in many cases, it's not, frankly, in the majority of 106 pro- projects that I work on, on a day, you know, almost a daily basis. Most, in most cases, adverse effects, if they're present, can't be avoided. The 106 process acknowledges that preservation, you know, needs to be balanced with other needs in a community, so, you know, a highway needs to be built, you know, and it might affect a historic property, so if it can't be avoided, can it be minimized? Can you change the route of that highway, you know, can you go around the historic building? Can you build a vegetative buffer to to minimize the effects? If you can't avoid or minimize, then you mitigate, and that again is is a way to conclude and and to comply with section 106, so. Mitigation can be any way to kind of compensate for for the adverse effect. Speaking to the second point on the slide, HSC, Hamilton Sunstrand is planning to demolish the buildings because of the safety concern and because they impede the ability to attract interested parties for redevelopment, for adaptive reuse. So we are proposing to the State Historic Preservation Office that that the buildings would be, that would would be demolished, and that likely some type of mitigation is going to be warranted. Adverse or mitigation rather, demolition rather, is almost always an adverse effect. So with that in mind, we've presented some conceptual mitigation measures for consideration to to the town and to consulting parties, knowing that it's likely that the State Historic Preservation Office will will conclude that that there's an adverse effect here. Next slide. So what are some potential mitigation measures, these are some things that we've begun discussing with consulting parties in the town. And these are, you know, robust, I think what I would consider, you know, really kind of creative, robust mitigation measures. It's not just throwing a plaque up and saying, you know, this building once stood here, I think these these measures are meant to be meaningful and to provide, you know, education and interest to members of the community and to visitors as well, so interpretive signage is is something that's been discussed. Walking trail combined with interpretive signage, and then also salvaging any salvageable, interesting, early, original building materials that could be reused in some type of outdoor exhibit, sculpture garden, some kind of town-approved location where people can come and see them, it's it's something tangible that that people can see and understand. Woven through all of these mitigation measures is the the Broadbrook Mill, so the 106 regulations do say that you know, the resource that's being affected has to be tied into mitigation. So all of these ideas would involve some type of interpretation of the Broadbrook Mill and its meaning, its contribution, its importance to the Broadbrook community.
Emily, can I interrupt you for just one second? I I just wanted to note that when, before we put together these mitigation options, we looked at sort of what people were doing in other states in terms of mitigation measures, and it really runs the gamut, and And we have seen, you know, oftentimes mitigation takes the form of putting something up on the town website to honor the, the history or putting together a, a paper brochure that people can, people can read about the history of the mill. And the feedback that we got from the consulting parties, or some of them initially, was that the town really, they really wanted to see something that you could touch and feel. So that we chose these options here because they would be more of a 3D experience than a, a paper experience.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think that was really important in our discussions with the consulting parties was, again, that the mitigation be far-reaching. Again, for some, something for the residents and for visitors. And that it be something tangible. So, next slide. Okay, so next steps. So again, we have these potential mitigation measures that, that we've begun to discuss. We are still in the process of, of, I think, thinking through that. You know, we're waiting for a, a final position from the town on, on some of the options that were presented. And then in the meantime, we have submitted an assessment of effects letter to the State Historic Preservation Office. And that letter presents our, our findings and our plans for next step. So it, it does acknowledge that there, the demolition would result in an adverse effect and that we intend to move on to discussing mitigation with consulting parties. The State Historic Preservation Office has a 30-day review period that will conclude on June 10th. So we hope to hear back from them in the next week or so with their feedback and their, their response. Following that 30-day review period, we will be having another consulting parties meeting. We're, we're anticipating that again to kind of see what the, the, the state has said, take their feedback and decide, you know, how we want to proceed with mitigation. Next slide, although I think that might be it. And that's it for the status. I'm happy to take any questions about 106, if anyone has any.
Questions or comments from members of the board?
Yeah, Jason.
Go ahead, Marie.
Yeah, um, you referred, um, in your comments, um, several times about consulting parties in town. Could you be a little bit more specific who your contact person is in town?
Let's see, I think I have a list of, you mean that the, our representative for the town or, or all of the consulting parties that we've?
Well, just curious as to who your consulting parties are in town.
And Emily, while you're looking at that, I'll just note that there were some consulting parties that were invited to participate, but have, have chosen not to participate. For example, the, the tribes are typically mandatory consulting parties. At least it, what I hear anecdotally is that they don't tend to participate in a number of these sorts of ongoing discussions. So we, the tribes are not actively participating. And the Historical Society indicated that they would not be participating. And I think the rationale was that this property was sort of not one of their, one of their projects or not one of their properties. So it's really the Historical Preservation Commission.
Right, yep. The, the East Windsor Historical Society, the Preservation Commission. Two, there are two tribes that, that were contacted, the Mohegan Tribe and the Mashin Tucket. We heard from one and didn't hear from the other, I believe. So we, we did reach out to both tribal representatives. And then representatives from the Town of East Windsor. So the first selectmen, obviously, and the town planner, I believe, have been both consulting parties included and as consulting parties throughout the process.
And then also we've had calls where Jessica Bottomley was participating and, and Barbara, I always say her name.
Barbara Smigal, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, Barbara has passed away recently.
Yeah, we're sorry to hear that.
Okay, thank you.
Alan?
Well, I have a question that's not specifically 106. It actually kind of ties both presentations so far, both sections of the presentation together. So I, I believe that in Dave's part of the presentation, you had said that there would be land restrictions against digging after kind of things were capped off and everything. And it looked like the whole site basically is capped. And then, you know, as far as redevelopment is concerned, like, how would you possibly redevelop the site? You know, like you couldn't even dig a trench for electricity or, or.
That's a good question, Alan. So the restrictions control, I will say, how you do excavations. There, there's a very specific protocol that you have to follow to do any excavations where if it's big enough, you have to release the environmental land use restriction, do the work, and then restore the area around where you did the work. The state has made it much more user-friendly, I will say, on small to medium-sized projects to be able to do that yourself, to release, to do the work and inform them of it and just keep record of what you're doing. But the goal is, there's material down there that, that could be, could have a, a negative health impact. And so you want to make sure you control coming in contact with that. So the environmental land use restriction is just the mechanism that controls that digging. So there, and, and another one that I mentioned is that there, there would probably be a no-build restriction over the area where there is chlorinated solvent contamination. And that prevents migration of vapors up into buildings if you were to build over it. But there, there's even a way to release that where if you put a vapor mitigation system beneath new construction, it captures those vapors and vents them out to the, the atmosphere and you can then build in those areas. So they're all workable environmental land use restrictions. You just have to work within the constraints of the, the restrictions.
Sounds expensive.
It, it does add some to the cost, but people who are used to dealing with this, it, it doesn't really faze them at all. I'm doing a big project in Cromwell right now where this person buys properties like these and redevelops them. The site was just a disaster. It was completely unoccupied for 25 years or so. And he has revitalized it. We've worked with them to, to make sure that all the environmental land use restrictions are abided by. And it's just part of daily life. Oh, we have to put in a trench over here. Okay, let's call Dave and let's figure out what we need to do to, to do that. And we just, we work cooperatively and, and make it work. So.
So even after the property is sold to a developer, you guys would still be involved in specifically, like your, your office would be involved for that kind of stuff, or it's?
No, not necessarily. It really depends on the, on the transaction. We have some where we stay involved. We have others where we trust the party enough to have them take over that responsibility. So it really depends on the transaction itself.
So if?
Either case, the state would be involved to, to oversee those projects.
And if you, you know, were to sell it to somebody that you did trust and then they screwed up and there was an issue, like, what's the, what goes on there? Like, is that, is there some liability to somebody? Or, you know, is it trigger some sort of other review and mitigation?
That would be between the state and that new owner of the property at that point. The state just recently implemented, you know, tighter controls, I guess, over environmental land use restrictions where you have to do an inspection of the property every year and report to the state on that. Or actually, you just maintain that record. Every 50 years, that has to go to the state. And if you're not doing things appropriately, the state will come in and correct that to make sure that you do do it appropriately. And there's also notifications to make sure that people who are working on those properties or living on those properties are aware of them and they respect those restrictions as well. So.
And, and Dave, again, just to underscore, any transfer, you know, title or ownership of these properties would include also an agreement that they respect these land use restrictions and so forth. I mean, they have to, so they are on the hook.
Correct, yes.
And we remain under, you know, a, agreement slash order with the state. So that would need to be managed through as well. I mean, right now, the state is, is looking to us to perform a remediation. So unless something changes for the foreseeable future, we will be continuing to, to do the remediation because that's our, that's our project. We own that.
Yeah. And there are sites all around the country that have different forms of environmental land use restrictions. And we keep track of those. We know what they are. We make sure the properties are being handled appropriately. So it's something we take very seriously.
If, if you're familiar with Goodwin University, as you drive down Route 2, so a portion of, well, one, that whole property was a brown field. It was a tank farm. And as you move further east, they actually have ownership of a portion of that property which used to be owned by Pratt and Whitney. And there is an environmental land use restriction on that property.
And actually, that's another one of my projects. They bought two parcels and built schools on them. So it's something that we're very familiar with working within.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? I got a couple. I'm trying to find the slide. I think I'm on page. Nope. Okay, so I'm gonna throw your PowerPoint presentation back up and, and just by, you know, way of updating everybody where this is coming from. We had a conversation with a representative from the Connecticut Land Bank, Wayne Bugden, who's actually, I think, here tonight. And he had, he had an idea that I have not heard discussed before, but I wanted to kind of introduce, you know, and, and we can talk about it, you know, perhaps subsequently offline. But it, since I've been familiar with the remedial work associated with this project, which goes back a long time, the conversation has always been about remediation of the entire parcel and what, what the available use for that would be after that. And Wayne introduced an idea I hadn't thought of or heard anybody else discuss before, which is the potential of subdividing the parcel and cleaning one piece of it to a certain standard and another piece of it to a different standard, which would potentially, so on the screen, if you, if you were to subdivide just here, would it be possible to, to remediate this to a residential standard, which is, is, you know, cleaner than a commercial or industrial standard, which could be here? Is, is, would that be a way of potentially preserving the structures that are still salvageable on the property? Has that been, and I don't need an answer on that right now, but, but what I would like to know is, is has that been a concept that's been considered throughout this process before? I, I'm not aware that it has. And, and honestly, I wouldn't have thought of it. It's.
I don't think that that's been considered just because of the, the variability of where that black material is and the thickness of that black material. So really, the, the cap across the entire site, just because the, the extent of that material that would need to be removed. I mean, we're interested in any ideas on what could assist with redevelopment of this property. So we would not reject it, but what was that, Jason?
Well, I was gonna say, the reason, the reason I think that's an interesting idea, and I'm sorry that it's somewhat late in the process, but it, it really was just raised with me. The reason I think that's an enticing idea to examine is because it seems pretty widely agreed that this is a marketable property if it's available for residential use. If it's not available for residential use, it's gonna be much, much harder to, to make the parcel contribute to the community again. So I thought, you know, if I'm gonna make up percentages here, but if, if 80% of it were remediated to an industrial standard, which I believe is what your, your cap proposal talks about, and 20% of it, the northern 20% of it were remediated to a residential standard, that might allow for a developer with some interest or, or an investor with some interest to try and preserve what's left of the, of the mill structures, in particular, that Building 11 thing that has been at the point of, of discussion for years. And part of Building 11, you know, I, I appreciate the opportunity provided by you folks to actually get onto the site and to see it. Part of Building 11 is definitely gone, like, gone. And that, that's this parcel, or this, this piece of the building right here. I mean, that's in a, a state of accelerating decay now. But this parcel, or this part of the, I keep saying parcel, this part of the structure seems to be savable. And, and if that's the case, you know, I just, that could become something that's, it, it would be great to do that if we could, is all I'm saying.
Have you identified anybody who is, is interested in investing? Back to residential?
Well, a gentleman, a gentleman who's taking notes on a tomato steak probably is. But, but not, you know, and he.
I think the funding might be an issue there.
Well, I, I'm not sure that that's true. You know, you know, he puts on a, a good show. He's a serious guy and.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I, John is a wonderful man. I, I enjoyed meeting with him and hearing his ideas. Yeah.
It, so, you know, and for the benefit of the folks on the call, the suggestion was that this property could become an, really an investment property for a nonprofit in town and a funding source. And there were a couple that were identified. But not if it's not residential. You know, I mean, the, the way the world is shifting, we don't know that there's ever gonna be a need for meaningful office space or incubator office space again. It's too far from the highway to really be anything other than residential. So again, I'm, I'm coming back to the, the comment that I've made, I think, a number of times. This par- this parcel in total, the 14 acres, was a significant reason why Broadbrook was ever a thing. Since the, the fire, it really hasn't been a contributing piece of property to the community. So we need to get it back to something that's gonna contribute. You, you contribute in, in really two ways. Tax revenue, which this isn't contributing now in any meaningful way at all, or some other public benefit. So as, as we move forward, and I'm, I'm ecstatic that the remediation work is taking place. I just wanna make sure that we're doing it in such a way so that we're left with something that can contribute to the community. And, you know, we've talked about that a number of times and, and I admittedly don't have the solution to that. But it, it can't be left in a condition so we can't do anything with it afterwards. That doesn't do us any good at all. Oh, those, that's my two cents. And, and again, I just thought that the idea of subdividing the parcel, you know, it, it seemed, as soon as the gentleman raised it with me, it seemed obvious. And, and I never would have thought of it given another 10 years to think about it. But as soon as somebody else said it, I was like, wow, that, that's, that's not an unreasonable thing to examine.
I may be speaking out of turn, but I would say, you know, if there was a, a serious offer with serious funding that looked at this with eyes open and said, yeah, we can turn this into something and we have the funds to do that, I think that's a wonderful, wonderful thing to enter into discussions about. But if it's something that is a, a wish and is maybe five years down the road, then. Five years down the road, then we still have concerns over. Uh, illegal access to this property, even though we're increasing our security out here and and, you know. I think everybody on this call would agree that one person getting seriously hurt out here is uh. Is more than all these buildings, so we wanna make sure that we keep safety in mind.
I I agree with that sentiment completely, you know, that the priority has to be public safety first, environmental considerations next, and. You know, the historical component of it is is a third tier consideration, but it still needs to be a consideration.
And it does need to be a consideration in terms of it's. Although the remediation and the historic seem to be sort of separate issues working in parallel, they're a little bit. Sort of codependent, in other words.
Yeah.
We're, we've been trying to front load as much of the remediation work as we can do without knowing the fate of the buildings. But we're starting to hit up against sort of an impasse where. At some point, the the fate of the buildings, whether they're up or down, does impact. The, you know, the final design, the final remedy, and of course, the implementation. So we're sort of at that um at that tipping point, but the proposal you make or the your idea, we. Obviously, had not um have not thought of that, but we're happy to take it back and talk with our consultants, and I think. You know, it obviously would involve the interplay of the regulators, right? Because it's quite clear that. Um, the remedy contemplates a um a regulatorily driven. No, non-residential land use restrictions, so there would be some. Interplay with regulators, and it seems to me that that would re, it would fare best, as Dave was saying, if you have a. If if there's a concrete proposal that you can lay out, I always find that. People are more receptive to giving you, you know, relief or not a variance, but giving you relief if you uh, if you demonstrate to. Them that you have a a concrete plan. So we can talk more about that offline.
Yeah, and I think really what I wanted to just do, and again, it was just raised with me very, very recently, so I. I just wanted to raise it in the conversation. If if you guys said, you know what, that's a great idea. If we had thought of it four years ago, it'd be a different conversation, but we can't do it now. That's a different conversation, but if there's, if there's still, if there's a window, then I wanna, I wanna see if there's. Some way that 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 structure, at least the parts of it that are in intact. Can can be protected. Now, for the, for the benefit of the board, I do have a couple of photos from the visit. Um, that shows the the state of repair, and and this is. So I mean, this is the the part of the building that looks to my untrained eye like it's still structurally salvageable. This part is a little dicey, and then there's some other stuff that is flat out not. But this, this is, all of this seems to be the original structure based on the changing contours in the brick. This stuff is the add-on, and this gets progressively worse. So where's that one? I got two more. There's this one, which is that same, so this is, this is the the good side of the bad part of the building. The good part of the building is is further to the left. And you can see that it is an attractive nuisance as as in its current form, for sure. But this is the part that you can see from the parking lot at um Kingsway, and. It wasn't that long ago that people were actually standing here taking pictures, so it it's gone readily downhill. And that that part's gone. I mean, that's the whole roof in that section is being held up by only a few feet of support material. But it's, it doesn't seem to be. Uh, it it seems to be separable from the other aspect of the building. You know, and Kristen, thank you, thank you again to you and your team for allowing us a couple of different uh opportunities to get on site and see it. It's been, I I tell you, it changed my whole perception of of the project. I also, at the end of the day, do still recognize that you own it, so. At the end of the day, it's gonna be your call, but I I think that there's, there is some. If there's some merit in trying to preserve it, and there's a a method to do that or an opportunity to do that. That would be great.
And again, time is really uh of the essence. The two things that are coming up next that we're currently working on, the H and H study. And the sixty percent design, both are fully dependent on the state of those buildings, uh what we're gonna do with them, so. The decision has to be made in the next couple of months, really, uh in order to. Have any hope of getting to remediation next year. On the main part of the project, so we really have hit sort of the the end of the the call of the sack, and we need to make a decision on which way we're going.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense for us to delay the remedial work while we shop around for a buyer, but if there's a period of time moving forward where. You know, we can try and figure that out. You know, I I don't want the cleanup and the environmental considerations to be put on pause again. I don't want the attractive nuisance and the public safety concern to grow. But I, you know, so if there's some time there, some conversations could happen.
I just wanna note for the uh for the board, and I don't know that we've ever mentioned this before, but just for the sake of clarity, when we talk about. Um, selling the property or divesting the property, under the consent agreement that we have, um the first. Oh, I think it's four million dollars of any sale proceeds go directly to the state. So just wanna make clear to the folks on the call tonight that Hamilton Sunstrand. Um, is ma, whether or not, what the sale price is, if there is even a sale price, if it's a donation, it. It it probably, at the end of the day, doesn't really make a difference, because we're certainly not looking to make a profit on the sale. We're looking to do, we're looking to divest the property because we don't have a business use for it. Um, and we're looking to divest it in a way that, you know, is, I I guess, is uh. Is in the best interest of the town as well. If we can, if we can make it a, you know, a a project that. Gets it back on the tax rolls or gets it back to active use and um the town is proud to have that property, then that's. Something that we're fully supportive of, but I just wanna make clear that it's. Selling it or getting a profit has never been anything that we consider. We would, you know, at least I could say, I would recommend to the. To the company that they donate it, if we could find somebody who would take it and rehabilitate the buildings and put it back to good use.
So um, on that point, Kristen, if if I'm looking at the property card and the appraised value of the property. In its current condition, obviously, which is is a brown field. Um, is four hundred and fifty thousand, so if you guys were to turn around and sell that for two million dollars. Would you also owe the state two million dollars, or do they just eat it?
Uh, they would just eat it. My understanding is they, they would just take what we, what we would bring in from a sale price.
So your your major benefit there is you're you're absolved from uh a certain percentage of the liability. So not all the environmental necessarily, but in terms of somebody like, God forbid, dying in the building, you guys are off the hook at that point.
As I, I think that would be sort of the the limit of the benefits. In other words, we divest the property. Um, to a party that wants to redevelop it. In in my experience. Given the circumstances, that party, that buyer would probably say, uh, look, we're not gonna. Take on any responsibility for uh the environmental issues that predate our taking title to the property. So um, I think you're right. I think i- in all likelihood, we would probably still have some ongoing. Remediation obligations and liability until we got regulatory closure. And again, a large part of this is just that, you you know, our business, because we don't have a business plan. You know, uh, the world is changing, right? And everybody's business plan is changing day by day, but. It's not been a location where we foresaw we were gonna have a manufacturing facility again, so. Um, we're actually anxious to to see it get back to a a, you know, active and robust use as well. We just know that it, it it won't be sort of under our um, under our ownership unless something came up unforeseen.
Any other questions or comments for Kristen and her team?
Um, the remediation level, you know, is is commercial only, not residential, but does that. You know, also include, you know, used as a, you know, open space passive recreation? Does it, is that considered safe, that use?
Uh, that one, we'd have to work with the the DEP on. Some other regulations include uh park areas as residential use. Uh, parks, schools, hospitals, those fall under residential use oftentimes. Uh, so we'd have to work with them to get them comfortable if that was uh an end use, that was of interest.
I'm just thinking of, you know, kind of spitballing different ideas. I mean, there is some frontage on the Broadbrook. I don't know if it's. Could be turned into uh, you know, an attractive area that is safe. Obviously, first, number one, wouldn't it be safe with the cap? Um, you know, and any other kind of monitoring and um. You know, ventilation, I guess, or whatever, but I, you know, I'm just curious if that's a possibility.
Yeah, we'd have to.
Right, because you talked about a mitigation, and the mitigation being, one of the things was, you know, a a walking trail, although, I mean, there's not much of a walking trail to walk around the lot there. But like, I could envision a potentially, you know, some sort of other park if it was safe.
Yeah, that that was part of the uh mediation option, was a a walking trail along the brook. Uh, with some signs, so that you could see the brook, and you can think about the history of the site, uh obviously.
Thought about connecting it to the park, because, you know, you've got the Broadbrook Park over there. That is sort of um proximate to the, to the mill facility, and there's a crosswalk there. So it seemed to us that if there was some opportunity to be able to connect a walking trail around the mill facility. But then also loop it into something at the park, that was something that we threw out there, but I think there were some. Um, practical constraints on being able to make that happen, so that that the walking trail may not. End up, at least as we were talking about it, may not end up being a preferable option for the town.
The other thing that they had spoken about was um, a- and I actually, I raised, they they talked about a walking trail, and just so happens, I. Had caught wind of something that AHRC was trying to do. Um, AHRC had been trying to put in a walking trail around the Mill Pond. And that actually would connect well in terms of the the history with the Broadbrook Mill. And Mill Pond, because the the Mill Pond powered the mill. Um, but there, there are some. It's not feasible from AHRC's perspective to actually install a walking trail along certain points around the the pond, so that that was. Entertained and kind of discarded.
Yeah, actually, when I was involved with them, I I did a walk around of that, looking at that, and it was, it was not doing it. It's it's a swamp. And and slopes are not good.
Could we put a senior center there if it's remediated to your standard?
Another one, we'd have to work with the DEP on, and whether that falls under the residential end of things. Or if that's more of a commercial use. My gut level is that's probably just a senior center would be more of a commercial use because of the duration that folks are on site. It's not a a living situation. It's become, we go, but we would would have to work with DEP on that one.
Yeah. It's not unique to you guys. I'm trying to, I'm trying to do that pretty much anywhere. Any other questions or comments for um Kristen and her team?
I just wanna say thank you to them for um finally actually doing something that looks like it has an end date to it, so.
That's the goal, yes.
Absolutely.
I I would echo that. Kristen, you guys have been awesome to work with. Um, we have not always been on the same page, but we've always been working collaboratively, I think. And I, that's, I think, in everybody's best interests.
Yeah.
Thanks. We we feel the very same way, and we are happy to reappear before the board. Um, to give you these sorts of updates, uh, when you feel like it would be useful to you. Otherwise, we'll just obviously continue to be working together collaboratively uh through the Section One O Six process and. Um, discussing any other options that that come up that, you know, we might not have thought of before, or ones that we wanna pursue.
Thank you, folks, very much. Very much appreciate your time.
Thanks, everyone. We'll drop off unless you need us to remain on.
No, thank you. You've been more than generous with your time.
All right, everybody. Have a good evening.
Okay, next up is nine B, uh, end of year budget status and reallocation. Um, I'd ask for a motion to postpone that. Um, that's also something we need to take up next week. Um, there's some information that I'm still waiting on from Department Heads that is not ready to go yet. Um, so could I have a a motion to postpone, please?
I'll make a motion to postpone new business item, the end of year budget status reallocation. Um, to a later date.
Is there a second?
Leckman Muska will second.
Maiden seconded, any discussion? Selectman Nordell.
Hi.
Leckman Muska.
Aye.
Leckman Baker.
Aye.
Leckman D'Souza.
Aye.
Okay, next is tax refunds.
Selectman Muska will move to approve the tax refunds totaling two thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Maiden seconded, any discussion? Selectman Nordell.
Aye.
Leckman Muska.
Aye.
Leckman Baker.
Aye.
Leckman D'Souza.
Aye.
Nine F, um, so the next two items, nine F and nine G are um resolution. One is a resolution or an assurance of compliance with the civil rights requirements of the of Title Six of the Civil Rights Act. This is one of the documents that is necessary for us to submit to the state for um. Uh, transfer of the ARP funding to the town, so um it was sent around by email earlier. And asked for a motion to accept and authorize the first selectmen to sign.
I'll make a motion to authorize First Lockman Bowser to sign the assurance of the compliance with the Title. Um, six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion?
Jason, I just have a question on the expiration date. Is that? What's the meaning of that date on the top of the first page, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one?
It's when the form expires. Oh, yes, we'll have to renew, renew or um replace the the form at that point.
Okay.
Selectman Nordell.
Aye.
Leckman Muska.
Aye.
Leckman Baker.
Aye.
Leckman D'Souza.
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Nine G. Um, this is a form designating the authorized representative of the recipient. The town is the uh recipient. I would be the authorized representative. Um, and the date side would be whenever you guys approve it, which hopefully will be tonight. Um, this is also one of the um pieces of documentation that we need to submit uh to OPM for. Transfer of the funding to the town.
Make a motion that we authorize the first selectmen to sign the U S Department of Treasury Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds document. Make a motion that we authorize the first selectmen to sign the U.S. Department of Treasury Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds document.
Is there a second? Seconded by, moved by Alan, seconded by Sarah. Any further discussion?
I was just going to mention, it looks like there's some, a few things that we'll just have to make sure that we're keeping the right documentation and whatnot through the process, but it sounds like our, our guy George would know how to handle this document fairly well.
It's actually going to be Amy that administers this piece of it because it has to do with the town financials. So the gun's number is her, tax ID number is her. Most of the reporting associated with it is going to be out of her office because it's going to be significantly prospective or after the fact. So it's, it's going to be handled by the finance department.
Jason, can you read a page two? Item number two, where it says period of performance. Yep. Says the period of performance for this award begins on the date here of and ends on December 31st, 2026. Then it goes on to say, as said, in treasuries implementing regulations, recipient may use award funds to cover eligible costs incurred during the period that begins on March 3rd, 2021 and ends on December 21st, 2024. So you have to use it by 2024 and then you have until 2026 to pay it? What does that mean to me?
So it means a couple of things. So under the, under the federal law, we have until the end of 2024 to commit the funds. We have until the end of 2026 to spend the funds. So if that was if we were putting in a sore line, we have to commit to that by the end of 2024 and the work must be finished by the end of 2020. Okay. Same thing, same thing is true with revenue loss. So if we, if we were looking to recapture revenue loss, we can, we can recapture revenue lost up to December of 2024, so long as we submit for that by December of 2026. So the, the anticipation there is that the economic hit may not be over. That, you know, so the, the pandemic and the shutdown happened. And now we're, you know, I'm not really, but we're, we're effectively in the after pandemic period where we're looking to see, are people going back to work? Are they going to be able to pay their taxes? Are they going to be able to pay their utilities? Don't count. So WPCA is not a part of that. But, you know, I mean, so if there's, if there's additional economic impact associated with the pandemic after March 3rd of 2021, there's an opportunity for us to recapture that on the back end.
Okay. And then on the same page, the bottom, the civil acts, we just approved that. So we were all set there now on that until November 2021. So make sure we, we do these forms then. But then on page five, 17 and 18. Increase seatbelts in the United States and reducing text messaging while driving. What does that have to do with the stimulus?
Nothing. It's boilerplate contract language for sub awardees of the grant.
Okay. Just because it's going to be hard to enforce that with a subcontractor or contractor.
Well, that's why they're saying that, that the recipient, us should encourage its, its contractors, should encourage contractors, not compel them or require them. But we just need to put some, some sort of a clause into whatever contracting document saying, you really should wear your seatbelt.
Yeah. Okay.
Same, same thing with eighteen. That it, you're, it is kind of goofy, but the federal government, I mean, they, they built the airplane. I'm looking on this one.
But, you know, it's a five-page document. I would hate for it to get put, put aside. And then in 2023, if somebody else is around, they don't read it and it's not put in the contracts moving forward because then it would require that we're in default of the contract. And then we would have to pay back whatever funding we received.
Yeah.
To me. But it is what it is. It's the state. You're right.
No, this is the feds.
Oh, that's even worse.
Yeah, this, this is, so it's good that you guys took the time to read this so thoroughly and have some questions about the boilerplate. But this is very much a take it or leave it deal. And there's a lot of money on the line.
I understand.
I, I will, I will be happy to encourage people to wear their seatbelt.
Yeah.
Forget, don't forget to tell them not to text and drive.
That's right.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
May I have a motion? Oh, we, we did that, right?
Yes.
Uh, okay. Selectman Norde.
Hi.
Leckman Muska?
Hi.
Leckman Baker?
Hi.
Leckman D'Souza?
Hi.
Thank you. I think we are now on to selectmen's reports. That's not it. So now that the pandemic is kind of receding a bit, I've kind of gotten back to the business outreach stuff that I was working on when I first took office. On May 21st, I visited with the Scandinavian Gift Shop to see how they were doing. As you all know, they moved to East Windsor in late 2020, just at the outset of the holiday season. And they brought with them several generations of loyal customers. I, I was delighted to visit with the owner. Her name's Olivia. I was visiting with Olivia. And she said that their, their business has been consistently steady since then. So that they're bringing, at the, at that gift shop, they're bringing another unique flavor to our local shopping options in the community. And it looks like they're poised for great success. And I was delighted to see that. This is another place to find just the right gift to commemorate birthdays or holidays or to share in cultures that may add to your own family's traditions. They're off to a great start and the town is lucky to have them. On May 26th, which was last Wednesday, Economic and Community Development Commissioner David Lehman spent the morning with me in East Windsor. I showed the commissioner the vacant showcase cinema site that had been intended for the casino and the vacant Walmart site next to it. The commissioner had not seen either of these in person previously, and he did agree that they would be highly valuable parcels to the right buyer. The situation between the administration and the tribal nations is still fluid as they're trying to resolve the ownership dispute. But I think the commissioner Lehman can be an ally to the town once ownership questions around the properties are resolved. On the first, the town sponsored with the Economic Development Commission, a development workshop featuring advanced CT. They did a deeper dive into particular strengths and challenges of our community, changing market conditions and best practices to encourage development. One of the points that was stressed that was, one of the points that was stressed was that meaningful economic development begins with retention of existing businesses, which I was really glad to hear as an indication of, of one of the things that we're doing right. As an example of that, yesterday I visited with USA Holling and All American Waste. They've been a partner to the town for many years, employing more than 150 people here in our community and more than 700 across their company. They are headquartered here in East Windsor and have been for more than 30 years. They're leaders in their industry in terms of sustainability and of service. They have installed a compressed natural gas filling station on site and enough solar panels to power all town of East Windsor municipal buildings on that one location. So that would be Public Works, the Annex, the Senior Center and Town Hall. They generate almost 800 kilowatts of power a year on just their roof mounted solar. Our longstanding partnership with USA Holling has saved the town hundreds of thousands of dollars by diverting the town away from Mira, which has seen extreme cost increases that the town has been able to avoid. I, I've watched with great concern colleagues in other towns really struggling with ballooning waste removal costs. And I've been so grateful that we have not had to experience that here yet. Commissioner Lehman and I, when he was here, we also toured the Silverman Group's project and met with owners of specialty printing. Specialty printing, as you know, started in Barn and Ellington and now has more than 200 employees. They work closely with USDA, the Postal Service, Johnson and Johnson, and many household products. Commissioner Lehman and I were talking with them about opportunities for expansion here in the community that I, I hope will come to be. On May 21st, the town held its first, its final COVID vaccine clinic, which was held at Mill Pond Village. We're at a point now where vaccine supply is so readily available that it doesn't make sense for the town to continue hosting vaccine clinics, which are costly. I'd like to especially thank Community Services Department and Melissa Maltese and the Public Works Department and Joe Sauerhofer for their efforts to, over the last many months, to set up these vaccine clinics. I think they really did make a difference. If there is a need, we will coordinate booster clinics in the fall or the winter as the guidance may determine. Later that same day, the 21st, I joined the deputy first selectman at Park Hill's first cookout since the pandemic began. East Windsor Housing Authority Executive Director Linda Collins and her team put on a great lunch opportunity for people to socialize again. And it was so great to see familiar faces and some new ones as well. Monday, we had a wonderful Memorial Day parade. The Veterans Commission did a great job organizing the event, which was particularly meaningful because it was our first large-scale community event since the pandemic restrictions were lifted. It was really great to see a turnout that I think had to be, had to be 200 people. Lastly, I want to remind everyone about next week's inaugural concert at the East Windsor Park to kick off our new summer concert series. The event will be on Thursday from 6:30 to eight and will feature Steel and Easy. Bring your families and enjoy this free event. On a personal note, I'll be slowing down a little bit over the course of the next month as my wife and I will be welcoming our second child sometime this month, probably sooner than later. That's all I have. Marine?
Yeah, Jake, um, you covered all three of the items that I had. I had one liaison meeting that was Economic Development Commission, which you've already addressed. Um, and the annual picnic at Park Hill you addressed, and you addressed the participation in the Memorial Day Parade. So that's all I have.
Sorry, didn't mean to step on your thunder.
That's all right. You did a great job stepping on it.
Alan?
Yeah, so I, I guess I'll mention I was at the, the advanced CT seminar along with the rest of you. I, I really found it really interesting. Other than that, I am back with, working with Warehouse Point Fire, or actually with the Fire Marshal on their software. The initial dump of information that we took out of their database didn't meet all their needs. So I've, and they need it, actually what they really need is more extensive. So I've taken their databases to my house where I can dig a little deeper and get more information for them. So I'm working on that. The other thing that I've got going on and actually escapes me at this point in time, but I, I'll save it for next time. Oh, the, the ordinance for the modification that we were discussing for the historical preservation, I'll, you know, have that ready for next time.
Great.
That's it for me.
That's off to a conversion too.
It's always deeper and dig more than you think.
Sarah?
Okay, on May 26th, the Board of Education held their regular meeting via Zoom. Dr. Christine DeBarge gave an update on COVID relief funds. The district, the school district was eligible, eligible for $315,000 in coronavirus relief funds for expenses that were encumbered by December 30th, 2020. The Board of Education was able to utilize $267,000 of those available funds. SR1 funds are now being used until summer on areas like HVAC updates and summer school. SR2's application has been submitted but has not been approved yet. Requested items include one behavior interventionalist per school building, a high school instructional coach, an outreach social worker, stipends for staff to conduct home visits beginning this summer, and summer work on the district's restorative practice. Dr. DeBarge is still in the process of writing the application for the American Rescue Plan. The school district is eligible for $1.9 million and the funds are good through September of 2024. One requirement is that the, a survey be sent to stakeholders within the town, to families, community members, the Board of Education and more to assess the community's opinion on the priorities of the school district and how to spend the funds. A link to the survey can be found on their website at eastwindserk12.org. Some areas of use of these funds could be tutors, academic support, technology upgrades and medical and custodial supplies. A reopening plan for the public to view is also part of the requirements to receive these federal funds. However, our school district has been open for quite some time now. The board received a NEASC visit update from high school principal Allison Anderson. The district will be releasing a press release soon with the explanation of findings on the visit. The Board of Education will meet on June 9th, but will cancel the rest of their summer meetings until August 25th. They will call a special meeting if it is necessary to meet during that time. We missed Alan Baker when we marched on May 31st, but Jason already talked about the Memorial Day Parade. I also attended that Economic Development Commission meeting earlier this evening with First Selectman Jason Bazza and Selectman Charlie Norde. We attended the announcer's booth dedication, the color guard ceremony by, by Warehouse Point Fire Department in honor of Anthony D. Mastroantonio at Osborne Field. The game tonight was AAA black versus gold in memory of Tony D. A beautiful sign made by Jerome Woodworking now hangs on the announcer's booth in Tony D.'s honor. It was such a touching tribute. And prior to this meeting, I was delighted to attend the East Windsor High School Senior Scholarship Night, which was held virtually. A sincere congratulations to all of the scholarship recipients. You all have a bright future ahead. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Charlie?
Okay, mine's a repeat of a lot of what everyone else said, but I'll read it anyways. On Monday, May 31st, it was great to see a good number of people out and participating in what was really East Windsor's first major event since the COVID pandemic. The Veterans Commission did a great job of putting together a parade and memorial services to honor our fallen heroes. And I thank them and all that participated. On Tuesday, June 1st, I attended a special presentation held on the Economic Development Commission's meeting with Advanced CT presenting to us great facts and figures about East Windsor and how they compare to the rest of the state and country. This useful information can help show where businesses can thrive or improve in town. It also is helpful information for businesses looking to make East Windsor their future home. And I hope it helps give our EDC information on areas the town could grow and improve. Earlier this evening, I attended a special dedication of the announcer's booth at Osborne Field and Warehouse Point to Anthony DeMastro Antonio. Tony D. was a lifelong volunteer at Warehouse Point Fire Department. The ceremony was accompanied by the East Windsor Little League Warehouse Point Fire Department members, East Windsor Parks and Rec, and several town selectmen. Special thanks to Mike and Erica Jarrow for creating the beautiful sign. Tony D. was, volunteerism in town and generosity within the community has been an inspiration to both me and many others. And the last thing I have is please join American Heritage River Commission for Connecticut Trail State on June 6th at 10 a.m. for their annual hike starting at the end of Melrose Road. And I highly recommend bug spray with all the recent rain we've had. And that's my report.
Thank you, folks. How about participation? Is there anybody still on the call who'd like to address the board? Seeing none. We will have a brief executive session. No action is expected afterwards. It would be, it would include just the five of us. Have a motion.
Selectman Muska will move. We go into executive session at 9:10.
Selectman Norde will second that.
Selectman Norde.
Hi.
Leckman Muska?
Hi.
Leckman Baker? Look, Selectman Baker votes yes. There you go. Selectman D'Souza?
Hi.
We're in executive session at 9:10. Thank you. Have a great night. It's 9:27. We're out of executive session. Is there any further business to come before the board? Seeing none. Selectman Norde.
Oh.
Selectman Norde would move to adjourn at 9:27.
Selectman Muska? Selectman Norde.
Hi.
Leckman Muska?
Hi.
Leckman Baker?
Hi.
Leckman D'Souza?
Hi.
We were adjourned at 9:27.